Call the meeting at Falmouth Public Schools for Tuesday, April 9th to order. Please stand for the pledge to public.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In accordance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, I remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded and telecast on Channel 8. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of the meeting, please notify me by raising your hand in person or remote, state your name and purpose, and please. Okay, thanks Gilda. Anyone else? Great, thank you. You want to read the mission and vision?
I would love to. Falmouth Public Schools' mission: Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. The vision: Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you very much. Next is public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items not on the agenda. Comments are limited to two minutes in length, and the committee cannot act on public comment. For items on the agenda, the chair can accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion, and comments can always be sent to our email address at schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.ma.us. Is there any public comment? Yeah, I was gonna say, I can't see the screen. Thank you. All right, moving right along. We're gonna take things just a little out of order because we have guests tonight, and we don't want them to have to sit through our whole meeting, so I'm gonna turn over to you.
All right, so we're very excited to announce that one of our very own department head was awarded a title. I'm gonna turn it over to Sonya, but I just want to say we're very excited to be able to announce an award that was given to one of our department heads. So I'm gonna turn it over to Sonya. I'll let you do the details and give you the honors and you can...
So, Mr. Michael Feeney seated here with us is the recipient of this year's Charles Nissakros Award for Excellence in Supervising Social Studies from the Massachusetts Council for the Social Studies. Mike received some very nice comments from the panel. One that stood out was just that they were talking about how, from the supporting document, the nomination, and the information that other colleagues shared, they can see that his reach is far and wide across the district in helping all educators. And they've offered Mike an invitation to also have a year on their Board of Directors, and they also want him to facilitate some professional development with them. So, congratulations to Mike and...
It's so long, it's...
I can't even tell you how honored and humbled I am. I never really thought something like this would happen to me. Short aside, something kind of funny I'd like to share with everyone. When Dr. Dora and Sonya basically explained how I, we talked about, you know, applying for this award, and once I received it, Sonya actually contacted my mom, which was really cool. My mom and her, and it's great because she doesn't subscribe to FAL TV, so I'll share this story, what was great was, she thought, Sonya said, "I got a reward, not an award." You know, I've been fielding some phone calls from family members. So, but on a, but in all seriousness, I'm really excited about this opportunity. I'm really hoping that with this membership to the Mass Council of Social Studies, that I'm able to sequester some professional development for my staff. They kind of know some of the things I do with evaluation, and I think that's kind of what helped me. So I'm hoping to kind of help people across the state, and I'm really, this is a perfect time because I need help too, and I'm really hoping to get some help from some folks, so I can help, continue to help my teachers, and maybe help other educators.
So Mike is a true leader in Falmouth Public Schools, and not only leading the Social Studies Department, but he's also been mentoring other department heads as they've been coming in. He has changed the way and the direction of the teacher evaluation. Just, it's so much more collaborative and goal-oriented, collaborative between the members as well as, you know, their own personal goals, but really has led that direction of the department. So we're, thank you, and thank you so much for everything you do, but...
Yeah, no, I, I am...
This award is wonderful.
I kind of look at my life as like, you know, the phrase, "It takes a village." I'm the luckiest villager. I've had so many people that have been so supportive in my work, and I'm just so super, you know, just honored to have this opportunity. And like I said, I'm hoping that this will provide me the opportunity to continue to help educators, not just history teachers. So, we'll see how it goes.
And Mike, Friday, you took a very exciting trip. Can, since you're here, would you have... It would have been on our update, but I would rather hear from you because you were there, so.
So, this past Friday was Student Government Day at the State House in Boston. I was able to go with Natasha Bradshaw, who's a junior I found in high school. She's a great, great student, and it's really kind of like a real-world experience where the student kind of makes their way up to Boston, and we meet, and we are able to go into the State House. They have two simulation activities. One is a debate activity, and then one they kind of look at passing a law. What's really cool was, because I've been able to go there so many different times with different students, I know where to stand and get the good picture. So, we were able to, it was really cool to see the student down on the House floor sitting on the desk of a representative, and she got some great pictures of like that perspective.
Can you just, I know we can't pop it up and everything, can you just show that picture? Because it's just a really awesome picture of one of our students.
Sure.
In the share, because it's...
Yeah, I turned off my phone, sorry.
Maybe it would make a lot of story for some of our communications that we've been trying to share.
Could we maybe get her in for just a short description? You know, is that doable?
Can you ask her? Yeah, can you pass, do you mind passing her phone?
Yeah, I said that I'm interested in Dr. Teller.
We love to hear from students.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely.
Oh my gosh.
I know, because we, just a five-minute...
Yeah, yeah, no, I can talk to her. Basically, you know, this, it, the state's been working hard, and DESI's been working hard to promote this program and to continue to build it. COVID really kind of, as with a lot of things, kind of impacted it, so they're trying to bring it back. So, for me, it felt great to be back in Boston, going to the State House for this experience, and it's just, it's really nice to be able to do that. So, yeah, so this is Natasha, and she's just, she's a great kid. I also taught her how to drive. She's a good driver. I teach a lot of design, so.
Thank you so much, and I love the timing that, you know, you just had this wonderful opportunity that you made happen for a student, and that you guys were able to make this other opportunity available.
Any of the meetings, whatever time she's, we'll make time for her at the meeting, whenever she can come. That'd be great to hear her perspective.
Absolutely.
Not everyone gets to sit in a chair.
True, true story. No, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Well, congratulations.
All right, so I have several updates. I would like to do one more now, and then we can do the rest later.
Yeah, that works.
So, last night, town meeting, we were very fortunate. I thank all of the town meeting members. All five of our warrants was approved. We have, of course, our budget was approved, the two stabilization requests, the FY '24, this school year, FY '25, and next year's FY '300. So, that will help us tremendously with the increases in special education. And then we had the Bean at East Falmouth approved, and the Lawrence elevator, and the additional costs that was gonna be for the fire alarm in the unit in Morse Pond. So that was under one. And then the North Falmouth roof was also approved last night. So, all of ours was approved. There was only one small question. All of them actually went on the blanket, except the North Falmouth roof, and there was just one small question about the solar, and whether that was, you know, that continues to come up even through the precinct meeting. We all want solar, I, you know, it just was not gonna be feasible for the roof at North Falmouth. So, I think, you know, everyone wants it so much that we want to make that happen, but, you know, but we're still gonna have other opportunities. We're gonna have some canopy opportunities soon, I hope. But anyway, so just please now the North Falmouth will go on the ballot in May, and then we'll know for sure that we'll be moving forward. I would like to say, we were ambitious. We thought that we were gonna move on the North Falmouth roof this summer. We learned that the money actually does not become available till July 1st. It's not in May after the vote, and it's too late for us to actually begin a roof project and hope that we would get done. It is something we really need to start the day after kids, you know, are gone to, you know, to give us the maximum amount of the summer. So, the project will be delayed one year from what we had told you before. So hopefully it'll still pass, and we'll get the roof on summer of '25.
Great. Thank you, Town Meeting.
Yep.
We're always so grateful. Such a supportive town. It's still you, so we're gonna keep going with the presentation on your goals.
All right, so I'm gonna share my screen. Oh, I'm sorry. One second, one second. We're not as rushed as we might have been.
I know. It is nice to not be racing the clock to be done before Town Meeting starts.
Okay. There it is. All right, that's beautiful. Okay, so I gave the mid-year update, and I had nearly completed everything in January, but this will be an update too. So here's Goal 1. Again, maintain a focus on academic excellence while improving the Clipper experience for all students. These were the standards, and every, I'm just gonna get through. Every, you have access to this, so every one of the goals are either completed or exceeded the set expectations. Sorry.
It was going so fast, I had no idea what happened. Did you go forward and back? What happened?
I did.
Maybe I went a little too fast, and then I went back to do it again.
So there's still, I'm not gonna go through each one because you have this, and we went through it in January. All I'm saying is now, it, but what I do want to talk about a little bit is about what is that academic excellence experience that we have for all Clippers? And so just a few examples that I wanted to talk about. One, you know, we reported on the math scores for several years, and, you know, and there were some areas, some areas where we were really strong, but there were also some areas of concern that we knew that we had some growth. And we looked at our current math program, and we made the decision that we really did need to look for a new math program. So using DESI's process and their top choices, we reviewed internally about 18 months to review the math program, and then, so this year we're implementing. And for the first time, we actually have an alignment in our math program from kindergarten through grade 8. And so I think when you, you know, before when we'd see some really strengths in certain grades and not in grades, and it did change from year to year, but we didn't really have that alignment. I think we're gonna see some real growth over the next few years because of this. Embedded in that new prelim is that we're also aligning our screeners for our students, and then the screeners helping to...
Your screeners?
Screeners, assessments. Screeners, I'm sorry. Screeners. My nasal, nasally tone now. Screeners that are, the teachers are assessing, and then being able to directly kind of point what is tier 1 and tier 2 interventions are right into the classroom, right? So it's helping to determine all that. So I think it's definitely a more robust math program than we have in the past. So we're pretty excited about that. And we were also looking at the science of reading. And so as we, again, looked at our program in the elementary school, the journeys, we had to look at what else do we need to add to that program to make sure that we were really meeting all aspects of the reading development? And so the implementation of foundations over the last few years. So now we're pay-through three now in foundations. And then at the 4th grade level, adding novel studies was a nice addition. So we really are meeting the science of reading because we have many aspects that we've added to make sure that we're meeting that. But in addition, we implemented when, so what I need now. And that's where the students within a grade level, teachers together, they kind of determine, and then they, the kids actually get to move from teachers and really concentrate on the areas that where they're having challenges to help. So implementing that in grade 1 last year and in grade 2 this year has really been a nice component. In addition, you know, we've had Clipper time for quite a few years, but adding that Bulldog time that mirrors what the Clipper time, and really helping students in areas where they're having challenges or needing to understand a certain concept, or where they have that extra time to meet with teachers in a small group to make sure that we're addressing that. One of the nice things that we've added is looking at where companion texts are available to students, where they, adding choices for students so that, you know, they may select things where they actually see themselves in their learning. So that's been a nice addition. At the high school, there's been some significant changes for the experience that students have. One is we've integrated Algebra 1 and Geometry. So for the students at Lawrence that did not pass Algebra 1 before, then they took Algebra 1 at 9th grade, but everyone else was taking Geometry. So by creating a class where by the end, they would have both the Algebra and Geometry and meet that, because they didn't quite meet that at Lawrence, then sets the whole stage for the rest of the high school experience that they're not, they're getting the same opportunities as all students. So that's been a nice addition. Increasing the number of honors courses and AP courses, and we've talked before about removing the criteria to actually be able to enter those courses, so that more students have opportunities, but it's also empowering them in their learning that if they're in these courses, you know, with teacher supports and differentiation, that they can be successful. Increasing CTE pathways, like the Food Justice Initiative, where in our second year, we continue to grow with that. We are looking at what that four-year pathway, as our students now will start entering their junior year, and having some additional opportunities and growing that program. And then we've been adding CTE programs as well, too, for next year, that I think I announced the last meeting, the Medical Assisting and the Aviation Medical Technology. So we're excited to get started with those. Increasing the number of COAT classrooms at the high schools, so students with IEPs are getting more of that same classroom experience, rather than being in a separate classroom for some of the course subjects that are able to... So now we have several, we have, you know, the math, the ELA, there's a history, so forth. But we also added a COAT trigonometry class this year, and it's really going well. It's something really exciting to see, so kids are being successful. And then, of course, just our entire, with its whole scientific opportunities that all of our students, a hands-on experience, really adds into what that Clipper experience is all about. In addition, our connections to the Monkanoak Tribe and the Kate Verdean Community provide educational enhancements just to our curriculum and our program. Within all of that, we've built structures over the years that we really utilize in order to continue to look at what the student experience is and how we can enhance that. So through our grade-level leaders, our department heads, LPAC, CPAC, TECH for Learning, the Learning and Access Advisory, the Administrative Council, School Councils, PTOs, coffee hours, conversations with superintendent, student advisories. At all times, we are talking about what that student experience is, and we're continuing to learn from the input on how we can tweak and adjust that. So, so that's a little bit about the experience that students have when they come to Falmouth High School, Falmouth Public Schools.
Okay, we're going to Goal 2. Can we do any questions about the new subjects?
Yeah.
Any questions about Goal 1? But it gave you a chance.
It did. Thank you. All right, so in Goal 2, is building capacity among all members of the administrative team to effectively communicate the mission, vision, values, priorities, and activities of the Falmouth Public Schools. The standards, I'll go a little slower. I have met and exceeded all of the benchmarks and criteria. Do you have all this? But what is effective communication now, and what has changed since we, the administrative team took this on this year? So, we learned from the very beginning on how to communicate the Clipper experience, and that was part of the presentation that we did for the school committee. But we've continued that presentation. The principals have done that at the schools with their PTOs, and just in various venues, we continue to come back to the Clipper experience. So, the second thing that we learned is how do we really tell the stories, right? How do we tell stories that are able to, everyone to help to see what we really are doing? So we did that. The topics were the SEL this year and the community partnerships. So, we did that through that, and then just the communicating the difficult topics. One of the things, oh, and then we also learned how to do the flyers. So it was different communication styles to be able to get. So through the budget was one way that we really learned how to do the flyers, and then the community district information sheet. However, this time I am going to share. Everyone is getting pretty good at this stuff. I'm gonna pass this out. They are, and I'm gonna give Dr. Tellier all the credit here because she actually designed this. Her creative eye is incredible. So it's amazing how we, you know, we learned a lot. Sonya has always created some kind of documents, but just the amount of information in such a pleasing way. So really give credit that this is a new flyer that we have, and really being able to advertise that bringing up the mission that we've been talking to you about. Here's some more details. We did have this ready for the town meeting last night, so it did get shared last night. So, but just as an example of how we're communicating what we're doing in the district. So, thank you, Dr. Tellier, for that one. And just thanks for all the people in the district. And you see it, it's just been a lot of efforts for us to get to the point of being able to be recognized for that. So, so the flyers was another way. But there was also some challenging topics like the equity audit and the grading practices. It was really interesting as Chris Horn was working with us individually on both of those, on the steps to take and to see through a actual trained communication specialist, right? Like what that, what that looks like and how to communicate the topics, and both of which have gone very well to date. So, you know, there are, that's not to say that people don't have questions that, you know, that may not agree with everything, but it's the way in which we attempt to try to communicate. So we know that everything, every decision, and I think this is one thing we've learned, that every decision that we make, that not everybody's going to like that decision, but how do we communicate so they might understand why we're making that decision, right? So I might not agree, but I understand your rationale, or, you know, such. So I think that's kind of an important key piece to understand that we're not, not everyone's gonna agree with everything that we put in place. But, and then, let's see, and then the communication plans, this is huge, because as busy as we get, he really laid out what a communication plan should look like. So from the very beginning, when you start any new initiative or project, you know, you build in, you know, when you're doing communications throughout, from beginning to end, you know, do you use social media to help with that? Are you sending out letters? Do you build a website? It's all the questions, but it's all built, who's responsible? And I have to tell you, it was really great during the whole belonging series, because you start out great, and I think if we didn't have this plan, and we did the first session, it was great. We've got, we've got some social media posts, comments from people. We posted those, and then before you know it, the second one was coming up on us, right? And it would be easy not to do, you have to do some communications leading up to it. What do you do after, right? And there's this little pause, but you have to do the same thing. It's, you know, communicating leading up, if you have it, then you do something after. And so I think just having that plan and knowing that that's people that are in communications, you know, literally, you know, lay these things out, that it's not magic, we have to work at it. And so it's been an interesting year. And so really appreciated the opportunity to be able to work with Chris Horn this year. All right, I can stop and see if you have any questions. Any questions on Goal 2? All right, bring on Goal 3. Okay, so Goal 3 is complete a comprehensive review of the business office practices and procedures to improve effectiveness and increase transparency. So again, here are the standards, and then, again, we've met or exceeded all the key action and benchmarks, and you'll have all this. But let's talk about the business office effectiveness. So, I will tell you, it's very unique that when we were assessing the practices, that we actually had someone that was able to really do almost, if not all, aspects. Everyone's, understand everyone's role, do the role, learn about it, and then be able to look at the business office as a whole. So, very pleased that we had Paul Dart in that role. It was just a unique opportunity that, you know, someone literally wanted to know every aspect of the business office. So that, number one, just started out. But the two areas that we found when we were doing the assessment that we felt would make the greatest change in efficiency and effectiveness of the office was accounts payable and the maintenance and capital improvements area. So, so that's, you know, what we focused on for this year and the changes. And the AP, you know, there was just some efficiencies. There was a large number. Those of you that come and sign the bills, you know like how great that is. But some of the efficiencies just in the beginning that Paul just noticed that we needed to change is like the Amazon. And I'm sure individually, we all do, we can get on, you know, about a $5 order, we get it, it'll be here, you know, the next day, it's great. But when you have to process in the business office every $5 order that's coming out across the schools, it becomes a lot. And then just trying to get the schools to consolidate, you can still order, but let's get, you know, $100 worth of items before we have it shipped and it's all on one. So just, so that's just an example of like an efficiency that you were looking for, right? But then the being able to close down the month of February so that you could get caught up on all the bills, and then close all the open POs. And that's huge, right? But it's just, if you don't have that time, you just don't get to do it, which means there's money sitting, you know, it might be $5 here, or $20 here, you know, because things just didn't cost as much as what when you opened the PO, and it's just, it's money that's sitting there. And so being able to close that and move that out actually builds money back into, whether it's the maintenance or where that's needed. So it does add up, and it's been extremely helpful in the process. So, and it goes well. And as Paul always says, if there's an emergency that we need to purchase something or buy something during, I mean, yes, you can still, but it's not like the hundreds that keep flowing through the office at all times, because it's a lot. So that was good. And then implementing a systematic process of determining the capital projects, you know. So, I will tell you before, I don't know that we really had a system, right? We would notice something here, we would, you know, this would break or whatever, and so they became. But going through the system, really having the head custodians and the principals going through the buildings and really determining what the priorities are. You know, they live in the buildings, they are having that, then looking at that, bringing the priorities, and then Paul being able to talk with them, and then setting the priorities for the district, you know, which you will probably see it change next year after going through this process this year in that 10-year plan. There will be some adjustments now that we've actually gone through the process, which is okay, right? It's an ongoing document, it should be continuous, so we'll be able to do that. The other side of it was the maintenance side, and the head custodians were not, did not... And the head custodians were not, did not have ownership of their own building budgets. And that was something that, a process that Paul had changed. So he sat down, they know their budgets now, they know what, what they're looking, the principals also know that. And so now they have more ownership of, and then just changing some things. You know, doing more in-house of fixing of items, getting maintenance contracts, looking at how we're ordering supplies across the district. So building in those efficiencies has actually helped in the whole overall maintenance budget as well. And then just training the principals in this whole process from August on and keeping up with having their involvement and input and oversight at the building level, I think has been a huge step as well. So lots of changes, much more transparency throughout the district and the different positions. And I think it's just really, I think we're just off to a great start. So I think that was a great suggestion from the subcommittee that, you know, we're doing this anyway. We knew we were gonna be looking at this assessment of the business office and making this a focus. I've, you know, I've, I've learned a lot through the whole process and feel really comfortable about where we are in all things finance and operations.
Good. Any questions on Goal Three? There.
It's not a question, it's a comment. The budget books are so much less cumbersome too. So thank you.
Yes, that would be nice.
Lovely addition.
Yeah.
For sure.
Any other questions on Goal Three? Okay, great. So that information is the stuff that you will use along with the document in line to complete Laura's evaluation. Alright, great. Moving on. Next is acting on the Student Opportunity, Student Opportunity Act Plan, which we heard a little bit about at our last meeting.
And it's in your, yes.
And we have a summary. Do we need to know?
Just, anything? No, we, I mean, it's all there, unless you have questions.
So this was the document that we have to submit after we approve it to DESI. And, uh, Terri?
No, I'm just gonna make a motion.
Oh, go for it.
I'd like to, to approve the Student Opportunity Act.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Heather. And we don't have any, any?
No.
So we're in person, all in favor of approving the Student Opportunity Act Plan? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
There we go. Thank you.
We can't miss.
And that plan is just another example of what we're going to make sure that all Clippers have a good experience. And just trying to address the needs of everyone. If you read through it, I think it's truly addressing so much, so.
It's very deep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, and you're not gonna get a break because the next up is your, the rest of your updates.
I know, appreciate it. So, so we have a little update here. We had three students from Falmouth High School that attended the state level Massachusetts Science and Engineering Fair. And so grade eleven students were Ella, Rosenthal, Robert Simkins, and Gaetra?
Yeah.
Gaetra. So, anyway, we have some lovely pictures here that I really want to pass around and show as I'm reading, if that's okay? I guess we could go over them, but. So I'm gonna read this. After earning a third place award at the Massachusetts, Massachusetts Science and Engineering Fair, Ella was invited to present her project, the potential of Cape Cod seaweed as biofuel. After honorable mention at the regionals, Robert Simkins presented his project, dusty plasma, how to, how do charged dust particles affect the efficiency of plasma creation? Alright, so this is very good. And Gaetra presented her project, the effects of ocean acidification on seaweed physiology. So that's, they were able to present, there's pictures, those pictures are great, that's why they say, you know, pictures.
Congratulations.
So that's one of the updates, congratulations, just happened. And they took the electric van with them to go, and that was quite an experience. So they had to find a charging station and it was all good.
I love that they had to find.
A charging station.
But they all thought it was wonderful.
Yeah, it was good. So it was quite fitting that our science and engineering team took the van and then went to Gillette. Yeah, so that might have been a.
Amazing. Congratulations.
For our family. Anyway, it's all good. Okay, so Paul, do you wanna? I'm gonna take a break for a second. Do you wanna share anything about year-to-date?
Please, sir, year-to-date budget, I'm yours through the end of March. Some of you have.
Oh, I got one. Is this what Sharon gave us?
Yes. One down? Yeah, just one down here. Margaret, you have?
Just.
Thank you.
Who else needs? I think we're good. Let's have a go.
Alright, if you want to focus just on the bottom line, under the totals here, you know, just to view the budget for this year is fifty-six million, one seventy-five, seven eighty-eight. So far, we've expended, this is the second from the last column, thirty-seven million, five ninety-two EB. Expended it directly or have an encumbered? Our encumbrances are actually now settled down to where we have about a million eight remaining for the year. You know, the begging encumbrances were utilities, bus lines, maintenance contracts, et cetera, that started off at the beginning of the year, and some other out-of-district tuitions. So we have eighteen million, five eighty-three left in the budget, which is about just over a third remaining for the budget. And that's before the town allocations from last night. So you can add in, for example, if you look up into district-wide, you'll see that the non-salary line there is negative year-to-date. And, and that's largely out-of-district tuition. So we have a five-twenty-five draw from the stabilization fund that will be coming in to bring that number up. We won't need the full amount right away, but there'll be still remainder, tuitions remaining for the fourth quarter. And also some maintenance expenses, Dr. Door was mentioning earlier, that are being reimbursed for the U of D project, for the fire alarm project, and so on too. So I'll tell, our expenditure, our available funds will go from eighteen, five eighty-three to about eighteen, eight sixty-three, once those funds are available. And now those funds come available immediately. So, and one, one other note, did talk to the town today. So on the draw of the stabilization, what happens is they actually set up essentially a capital account. And we do, if we were not to use the money fully this year, we have another, we have a total of three years to be able to use that, those funds. So it gives us a little bit of flexibility. You know, there is, you know, just one, always saying, there is volatility in out-of-district tuition. It is student-dependent, so you can have a student coming off the rolls, you could have a student coming on the rolls. There could be significant differences in the numbers at any given moment in time. So it's good to have that stabilization fund available. So that's about it. We're just, you know, confirm we're in good shape, especially with what happened last night, so.
That's what we'd like to hear about the budget.
Any questions for Paul?
One quick question. The negative on non-salaries at East Falmouth?
Yeah. So the negative is actually in the maintenance account. And it's because of work that we did there in the modular units at the beginning of the summer, which in particular was the biggest cost. We did, you know, we did bring up the sewage line issue. We did, were able to fix that. We didn't have to wait for the summer to do that. So that pipe has been replaced, they did not have to go in and drill through the floors, which was a big concern. So they had to give credit to Jamie Baker Plumbing for the work that his men did on repairing that sewage line and getting it done. Very reasonable amount to be charged, that was a pretty big, pretty concern.
So. It was in there.
There was a couple other items that are also in there, but it's maintenance.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Paul? So I have one. So we don't usually have additional money come in from the town during the year. So what happens with, like, is that gonna also affect the budgeted number? Or does it stay out of that and then we're gonna end up looking like we spent more than our budget? Like, what's gonna happen there at the bottom line?
Well, the, so the, and this is a little bit technical. So part of the money that was spent for the fire alarm and for the unit project was not spent on the budget, it was spent in one of the off-budget accounts, the school tuition account. That, that will be essentially reimbursed for those funds. So you're left with about thirty thousand that would go into the capital account, which is in the district-wide account. I don't have a good answer, but it won't materially change our budget numbers if it was a revised budget number.
And then that five thousand is in a capital account, so that's not gonna affect that bottom line?
Yeah, that's not, that's a, it's, that is viewed as a capital article, so it's off our budget.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, Paul. Do you have anything else?
Yes, I have two things.
Okay.
But I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Tellier right now to talk about a little bit of a change in the health curriculum at Horace Pond.
So just recently, late June, the Department of Education released their new health standards, which the original one was from nineteen ninety-nine, and they hadn't been updated for some time. In releasing them, we are now getting support both through DESI and Mayford, which is the Massachusetts Association of Physical Education, Health Recreation, and Dance. I think I got it the right order that time. Which is their professional organization in the state who really helps to guide and steward decisions around what curriculum, who's providing PD, and making sure that we're aligning the new standards, given a lot of the work, especially from the governor's council, around making sure that the health standards in particular were lined up correctly. One of the big changes comes in how we talk about personal hygiene, growth and development, and sexual education or sexual health. And so of the new resources, we are looking at specifically a curriculum that's just about that, that set of standards for Horace Pond. It is called Puberty: The Wonder Years. And it was very strongly endorsed in our work through Mayford. It is something that they talked about both at their statewide conference and then also at all of their different symposiums or sessions that they held specific to health. So our new department head, Brett Formley, he's attended some of the sessions as well as some of our teachers. And so they've done multiple layers of evaluation, and really this is the one that keeps coming up as the standout. So we've gone through the vetting process, and one of the other big changes in the standard is that that unit is taught inclusively, meaning that students aren't separated when that unit is taught. Best practice is that they're together. So the other part is the PD that we've been able to provide to our teachers to make sure that they are prepared for that change and bringing the students together, as well as understanding and being able to work with those resources so they know how to use them. And they are hopeful to be able to update the communication, because that's the, the one unit that we're required to send updated communications on regularly to families, and also to notify them of when we want to be teaching the unit. And we're hopeful to, now that we've got the vetting process done and the professional development process done, we're hoping to be able to teach that unit in mid-May.
Any questions for Son?
Parents given the opportunity to opt out, or is this gonna be a problem with us getting the communication out in time?
We are gonna make sure that communication's out within a minimum of two weeks for families to have that information. And one of the things that we appreciate about this particular one is their full scope and sequence is also available on their website, and they also have parent education information, which is incredibly helpful. But it is the one place where families are allowed to actually opt out of the, of the learning.
And that's gonna be clear in the parent education newsletter.
Any other questions? Oh, questions, sorry.
Yeah, no, when you said there are parent education materials, I'm wondering if we've ever done any like parent education sessions around our, our health education offerings?
I don't have one sticking out of the top of my head. That doesn't, that doesn't mean we have it. I don't mind looking, but I also don't think that the team of mine hosting them.
Long time. I'm just thinking, like, very different, right? But I remember when, oh my gosh. I don't even remember. Ten-ish years ago, when we went to a new math curriculum and there were a whole bunch of math academies in the Mullen Hall, right? So that parents could go and learn the new math, right? And how to help your kid with math. And I'm just thinking with something like this that is so sensitive and with the opt-out, that that might be a, a nice thing to try as a new practice for parents of that age to understand what their kids are gonna be learning and how they might be able to facilitate conversations at home and make it feel a little bit more comfortable.
Thank you. We'll take that back to Brian, I think it's something you'd be very open to.
That's a good.
Okay, so do you remember a few meetings ago, the whole safe and supportive schools came up in the meeting? And we had, and then I, I did at the time share, but then I let you know that we have done a lot around the safe and supportive schools and kinda gave you a list of things. Even shared that we had applied for a grant, but we weren't awarded the grant because we were already so far along the process, so that's good. And then there was a school committee member that chaired me. That would be a great flyer. So thank you, Sonya. She had, she put all of our safe and supportive schools documents, sorry, information into another flyer, so I'm here to share.
We're gonna have Kate turn job.
I know. I mean, she's really creative with the flyer queen. But, and then the backside takes each one of the components and then color-coded to the front, so each one of DESI's, and then shares what we're doing as a part of. Thank you for that. And she's just been really creative.
It's just cool not to see them on the screen, right?
I know, it's, it gets a hold of them.
So are both these materials? Oh wait, is this it right here? So, I'm just wondering if these are available, if they are available on the screen.
They are. So Brian follows up. So this is our whole communication plan, and Brian has a part on every communication plan that we get done. So this, this one has its own link, it's a safe and supportive schools now, has other information, and then the full documents there. And I can't, I can't see Brian. Is the, is the, I know. Is the ribbon, green ribbon up, do we have that one on the website yet? I don't think it is yet, but it will be.
The safe.
So all of them. The safe and supportive, yep, he just put that one up.
I don't think the green ribbon is.
And then I don't think they have the other one done, but we do.
Great.
Yeah, so everything we've been doing, we've been adding to the website, so all that information's there. And then something fun for our students, not the, the sticker's fun, not the safe, but anyway. Here's the stickers. We combined our sticker with the say-something with the Falmouth Public Schools. And the QR code that kids can scan immediately and get in. But just some water bottle stickers, laptop stickers, wherever they might wanna put the sticker, but it is a sticker. And so we combined, really just wanting everyone to know that we are say-something district and something more, hopefully, from, available for students if they need to make a report, so.
Great.
Any questions on the safe and supportive schools?
These are awesome. I'm volunteering, if you wanna give me some of these flyers to take them to places like the senior center, et cetera, where members of our community aren't necessarily getting it on the computer.
That would be fantastic.
And just have them put it on the bulletin board.
Yeah. So someone had given last night the suggestion that we give the flyers to real estate offices as well.
I can do that too.
Can you do that?
Yeah.
Well, we're just gonna get a big box of each one of you.
Whole library in her trunk. A whole library in her trunk.
Yeah, exactly.
Just a missing flyer. That's a great idea.
So that is a good idea.
Because in recent weeks, I've had dinner with people in my age group, and this is what I'm being asked about, you know, the safety in the schools, et cetera, et cetera. And they're not reading about it. So this may help.
Yeah, that's great.
Great idea.
The library is a good place to.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, that's awesome. I love that idea. So that's great. So thank you. All right, and I'm gonna stop now.
Okay.
I'm sure there's lots of things to share, but I'm gonna stop.
Wonderful. Thanks for all the great, it's all great news. It's wonderful. We'll move on to routine business and approving the minutes from March 26th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Heather, a second?
Sure.
Thanks, Terry. Any comments or discussion on the minutes? Great, all in favor of approving the minutes from March 26th? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? That's unanimous. All right, any requests for information that I can pass to Melissa? Anybody need anything? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I just say that I would like to acknowledge our reporter who received the award?
Yeah, congratulations, Gilda. You wanna make the motion to adjourn while you're at it? Great.
So moved.
Second? Second, thanks, Heather, all in favor.
Aye.
Adjourned, thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you.
You can take these.